Anton, if you can hear me, I need the 800 number. I'm out of town.
Oh, okay, let me, let me see. Let me get that for you then. It's 888-278-0296. You got that?
Okay, 888-278-0296.
Yes, and the conference code is 685171.
Okay, 685171.
Yes.
Conference code. Okay, I don't know. I don't know if I'll be able to get on. I'm in a hotel. And I don't, and I don't have the packet. I read it online, but I can't see it. So I don't know what's gonna happen. I have the minutes and that's it.
Well, let me know, Diane, if you, if there's anything that I can help support you with.
Yeah, I'm gonna have my husband come back and see what, what I can do.
We can hear you fine. The way you're logged on now, could you just stay logged in like that?
I can't see the packet and I never got an email of any kind for the packet, but I got the minutes from Anton before I left. So I'll just see what I can do.
I sent an email on Friday, although it doesn't have the packet in it, but you can access that online.
So Diane, are you ready to begin or what do we?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna see what I can do. I've got the minutes in front of me. I've looked at those and then I looked at the packet, but I don't know if I can read the packet. You know, if I close the video, maybe I can get the packet and then just stay back and forth on mute.
Okay.
I don't know. Cheryl, how did you do it when you were out of town? Did you have two computers?
No, I was able to just open up the window while Zoom is open, minimize Zoom a little bit and then open up another browser and just went to the city's website and downloaded it. Sometimes I had to print it out, you know, just to kind of have that handy, but.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'll do the best I can because my son doesn't have internet, so we're in the hotel. They live out in the walnut orchards and they just, there's certain parts in Chico where they don't have internet, which is too bad since everybody's on the net now. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be hard to do it if you don't have the bandwidth to get to the website.
Yeah, so I'll see if my husband in a little bit can help, but I can at least do the minutes.
Let's see, are we waiting for Commissioner Beckenin?
What about the other guy?
Aaron said that he is at work and that he would try and join, right?
Okay, I didn't see any email from anyone, so I don't know.
And they did just have a fire recently, so he was even more unsure if he was gonna make it right at 6:00.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Well, let's see, we do have a quorum, so why don't we begin? Good evening. This is the regularly monthly scheduled meeting of the Trinidad Planning Commission for Wednesday, May 18th, 2022. First item on our agenda is the roll call.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins. Hi, Tom. Commissioner Cole.
Here.
And Commissioner Stockness.
Here.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from last month, April 20th, 2022. Any comments, questions, corrections of the minutes?
Yeah, on page seven, it states that I suggested adding rainwater catchment and asked about the tsunami warning system. I think that was Aaron that actually said that.
Okay, we can make that change. I don't remember, I don't recall.
I don't recall either, but I don't, I also don't recall saying that.
Okay, that's fair enough. I appreciate it. I admit that these are probably the most complicated minutes we've had for a very long time. It was quite a discussion and thank you very much, staff, for capturing all of the, all of the comments and, and, and changes that we were discussing. They're quite comprehensive. Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments, corrections? Diane? You're on mute?
So I just wanted to state that, let's see if I have the right one. Oh yeah, we just, we just need to do the, the page three of a property owners within 100 feet and those affected. Parker was, Trevor's gonna change the wording there and then.
Excuse me, Diane, where are you exactly?
Page three of eight and I'm at the bottom, second to the bottom paragraph.
Okay, you're on the minutes. The minute for seven pages long.
Yeah, three of eight. Oh, that might, yeah, I'm on.
What's, what's the date on the bottom, Diane? For 2022?
I provided Diane with minutes on, on Wednesday before she left, so I think there might have been some changes between then and now. Or then.
Okay, I was just, that, that's, that's okay. I just couldn't reference where you were talking. So could you tell us again which paragraph you're referring to?
Well, it's on three of eight, the draft minutes that Anton gave me. It said property owners within 100 feet and those affected. And it was under review procedure. Anyway, I just thought, you know, there were a couple, a couple of real important things in the minutes that we just need to bring out again. The signage master plan and the city should be reviewing landscaping and low pitched and high pitched roofs. I don't know, was that in this week's package, Trevor?
There is a further definition of low pitched roofs.
Later. Okay, okay, I think that's it.
Counsel.
What about major, what about major vegetation removal? Did you do a definition on that, Trevor?
I did.
Okay, well, if I could get the screen out, maybe I can read it. Okay, seven of eight. I think that's it.
Okay. Counselperson Kelly, put her hand up.
I didn't want to interrupt until you got to the point where you were asking for public comments, but I think I was the culprit who suggested taking the tsunami warning sign off and also adding rainwater catchments on page seven. Yeah, so I just, I don't know if it matters, but I'll just, it was me. I confess.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll start.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Cole. Any further discussion? All in favor, affirm by raising your hand. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes that they would like to make to the agenda this evening? We have essentially four items for discussion, decision and action in, in addition to, of course, the normal reports and future action items. Any changes? Hearing none, I assume that we can by affirmation approve the agenda. Okay, the next item on the agenda is items from the floor. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public who would like to address or make comments to the planning commission on any item other than agenda items this evening. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? I don't see anyone from the public. Am I correct?
Can I, can I ask, maybe this is the proper time, if there's any ability to make these meetings in person in the future? Or is that not up to us?
Let's see, I think there's, they're working on a policy, I believe, with the, with the city. Is that correct, Cheryl? You know?
Yes, what we're looking at right now is trying to go to hybrid and I believe the goal was by July. So by hybrid, you know, having in person again, but having the option for members of the community that didn't feel safe to call in. And so Gabe has been working on the technology and I believe we're gonna be able to do a little bit of a dry run in June to test some of the functionality and make sure it's good to go. So that's kind of the, the status right now. Whether the planning commission has to follow those guidelines or not, I'm not sure, but I believe, I believe that that would be the case, but that might be a good question for Eli.
Actually, that does raise a, a, a good question. Maybe we should maybe just have a brief agenda item on our next month's agenda and talk about what our feelings are, our, our desires and couple that with what the, the city is able to do with their technology and then we can decide which route we want to go. Is that fair?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, any other items from the floor? Again, I didn't see anyone from the public. Okay, moving on then to our agenda items. The first item on our agenda is election of Chair slash Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Trevor, you wanna lead off the discussion?
Sure, so this was prompted by by Councilmember Kelly leaving the Planning Commission. She had been the Chair. Commissioner Johnson was serving as the Vice Chair, so he has been serving as the Acting Chair since then. We did not immediately elect new Chair and Vice Chair because we were waiting for the ordinance amendment to go into effect that affects how the Chair is elected and so that is now final. And so this will be electing a new Chair and Vice Chair. This is an election year, so so a couple, at least a couple of Commissioner terms are up, so we may need to revisit this early next year. So this might just be a year appointment depending on what happens with the commission later this year.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comments or discussion from the Planning Commission members? Our action is to elect the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
I mean, Richard, do you wanna keep doing it?
I can keep doing it. Yes, for, for, we'll see what happens with the, with the end of the year, yeah.
Yeah, and you're fantastic and yeah, Diane, you guys have been on it both longer. Tristan, I'm, I'm a newbie, but I've got plenty to do. Don't, don't need any more, but anyway, that's my feelings.
Okay, and my feeling is that, Richard, you stay as Chairman and let Aaron stay as Vice Chairman and then move on from there next year. Yeah. Just kind of like what Tom said. And if Tristan's okay with that and you, Richard, that's my motion. I make a motion to keep Richard and Aaron in Chair and Vice Chair for the remainder of this year.
Yeah, I mean, I think Richard does an excellent job of leading these meetings, so I would, I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and it's second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I will abstain, I think, but that still is a majority, so the motion carries. All right, so I'll, I'll still continue. Thank you very much for your confidence. Appreciate that. And don't hesitate to tell me if I'm doing something dumb. And Aaron will, will continue, will now be the Vice Chair for the Planning Commission. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on our agenda is appointment of, excuse me, it's an election of a new Planning Commission representative on the Trails Committee. Again, Trevor, just a real quick staff report.
So this, at the March meeting, the Planning Commission was asked to appoint a new member representative to the Water Advisory Committee, which was being reconvened by the City Council and that position had also previously been held by Councilmember Kelly and Commissioner Hakkinen expressed an interest in being on the Water Committee, but he was already on the Trails Committee, but we didn't have appointment of a Trails Committee representative on the agenda, so Commissioner Hopkins expressed an interest in being on, on the Trails Committee instead, but since we didn't have that on the agenda, we didn't vote for that. So Commissioner Hakkinen is, was appointed to the Water Advisory Committee and now you know, unless there's further discussion, you would appoint Commissioner Hopkins to the Trails Committee.
Thank you. Any discussion, any comments from the Planning Commission?
I think that's, I think that's an excellent idea.
I suppose we need a, just to carry through and make it a motion. So Tristan, can I, is that a motion from you?
Yeah, I moved to appoint Commissioner Hopkins to the Trail Committee.
Thank you. I'll second that. Any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hand. Diane, are you voting?
Yeah, yeah, my thing went off, so it's gonna be a tricky night.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Let's make it quick. Thank you. Yeah, I'm voting yes.
Thank you. And Tom, I assume you're abstaining or did you vote?
Yes, no, I abstained and thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next item on our agenda is the good stuff. Project Streamlining Exemptions, Exclusions and Administrative Permits. And this is a, continued from our last meeting, which was a continuation from our previous meeting. And so Trevor, I'll, I should lead us off with a short staff report and then we can go from there.
Sure, so I put this item first. We had been discussing design review first, but, but then sometimes time kind of ran out for this item and I think this item is really close to getting to a point where I'd like to submit it to the Coastal Commission for review and comment before we spend a lot more time on it. So I put this item first, hoping that we could maybe get, get through this and, and you know, I don't, I wouldn't say that the Planning Commission should, you know, prove it at this point, but just, you know, indicate if you're satisfied with it to the point of submitting to Coastal Commission staff for review and approval. So I added back the information on exemptions, exclusions, administrative permits. There is some overlap with this item and the definitions. So I will talk about some of the definitions that are in, in the packet for the next item, but, but they do overlap, so so that was, that's a part of my staff report. One of the things we've talked about is scenic corridors, scenic vistas, scenic views and do we, and there has been an indication from the Planning Commission that you would like the auction to designate an area or, or something as a scenic. And so I provided a variety of definitions. And I also included some, some caveats. So you know, if the Planning Commission does designate an area or corridor as scenic, then there are some implications for permitting and there's a few more hurdles in terms of then it would be a sensitive coastal resource and exemptions wouldn't apply to those areas. The review for permits or, wouldn't apply to those or would be a little bit more stringent for those areas. So just wanted you to be aware of that. I think, yeah, I think, and I, I also included some examples of where this terminology comes up in, in primarily the design ordinance and regulations. So yeah, I think my, my conclusion was that for the most part, some of these terms are sort of self-explanatory, but I do think, for example, we have view is specifically defined in the view protection ordinance because it's a, it's a, it's a regulated thing. So I think we probably don't need definitions for, you know, vista point or view shed because those aren't necessarily things that are specifically regulated, but if you wanted to designate a scenic area or a, or a view corridor, which I'm, you know, based on the definitions I've found, I'm not sure view corridors are really appropriate for, for Trinidad. And I would suggest the, the one place that it occurs. Oh, is at the top of page three, so from CD, which is in the design element, policy 2.6, preserve and enhance view corridors by undergrounding utilities is what that policy is. And I think view corridor is probably the wrong term for that for that policy and then, and then we wouldn't have view corridor anywhere else in, in our documents at this point. So that is one thing that you guys should discuss. OWTS definitions, I also included some that we have now. I think this is something that, you know, I'd, I'd like to get any input from, from the Planning Commission on, but I think it's something that the Coastal Commission is gonna have, you know, definitely some things to say about this and they're gonna dictate some of how these are defined and, and regulated. So I would like to have a conversation with Coastal Commission staff about these before we refine them too much. But again, I'd like to get input from, from the Planning Commission on, on any of that before I take it to Coastal Commission. So yeah, so I guess that is it for my staff report. So I primarily wanna discuss those two issues and then specifically go through all my comments and questions and make sure those are addressed before I send this off to Coastal Commission staff.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I was thinking earlier today, the best way to maybe handle this and perhaps like, like we have done in the past is to just walk through page by page and if there are questions or clarifications that we are requesting, we can do that. At the same time, answer some of the questions that Trevor has asked us to look at and then maybe any other comments that we have. So does everybody agree or is, that that's an appropriate thing to do at this point? No, there's Aaron. Hello?
Yeah, I think that's the right way to go about it. I think that worked well last time.
Okay, let's, let's just walk it through and if you have any questions or comments for Trevor or if we need to answer some of Trevor's questions, we'll try to do that for you. Okay. Just seeing where to start. I guess the best place to start is on page two. And Trevor has provided a definition from, as she just pointed out of some things regarding view. Is there anything or comments or clarifications that we want on page two? Page three? Trevor, I had a question. It wasn't clear to me, you know, you have three definitions of the view corridor. Each one is a little bit different, of course. And it seems like we should try to pick one or mishmash them all together to come up with one if indeed we want to even utilize view corridors, just as you said earlier. If that goes away, then the need to define it goes away as well. So any comments or questions on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think as Trevor noted, that's the one place where the term view corridor comes up and it seems like we could just do away with it from that, from that piece of the code, so we don't have to define it at all.
Yeah, I would tend to agree.
It seems like a silly thing to define.
Well, yes. No sense doing it. We don't have to. Anything else on page three? Okay, moving to page four. Anything on page four?
I have the definitions of scenic view that Trevor provided there. She provided four of them. I thought that the, if we're, if we indeed wanted to find scenic view, which I guess we may as well, in this instance, I thought the second definition was probably the most appropriate for our needs and we could probably just roll with that.
I, I thought that the third, basically saying that expansive views of highly valued landscape and is vague, but people can kind of fight over it a little bit if it's a problem. That's, I don't know. And then the scenic, scenic area down below with historical significance. I don't know, I'm, I'm, we're splitting hairs, but yeah, I, I think the more talking, if they're gonna try to block a scenic view of any kind, I want them to talk as much as possible about it.
Yes, I had, and I might be a little catching up here, apologies. But primary living area, just kind of a question, what they accept the definition of that is. You just want to make sure we're not excluding exterior spaces that people have that have views that would want, need to be protected. And then just whatever we decide on, I don't know if we're trying to win this down to one, but making sure that it's not limited to just ocean-related views. I think there's a lot of scenic views that are not strictly ocean and nature, trees, forests, that kind of stuff. I just want to make sure we include that as well.
So just a couple of comments on that. So the view, so the existing definition that we have a view is at the bottom of page two. And it was definitely discussed whether to include mountains and forests. And that was, you know, when we were developing the views and vegetation ordinance, that was determined to take that out. So I think, you know, when you're considering design review and someone's building a house, I mean, I guess how much? You know, do you want to consider trees and forests and, you know, does that get to be too much? Or is it the coast? That's, that's really what's important. So that's one, one way to think about it. And also part of it came from the existing general plan language that that only protects basically coastal views currently. And it all, and so, and part of this is, you know, the coastal act protects public views of the coast. So coastal views. That is, it can be kind of expansive if coastal areas include forests and other things. But the coastal act only protects private views, protection, I mean, public views, protection of private views is pretty uncommon. And so that's not a coastal act issue. And Trinidad's current general plan protects private views from inside residences. And so so we did continue with that because that's what's been protected in the general plan since the seventies. Private views from outdoors has not been protected in the past. Although in our views and vegetation ordinance, we did include some language that says outdoor areas may also be considered, but they're not the primary viewing area, which, and that is defined in our views and vegetation ordinance. It includes things like living room, dining rooms, probably bedrooms, maybe master bedrooms as well, but not, you know, bathrooms, hallways, you know, storage areas, things like that. So just a little, that's just a little bit more background.
So I guess I was trying to figure out why we even had to use this scenic view definition whatsoever. And it seems to me that it was covered pretty much under the definition of just plain views. Is there, are there, and I didn't see any necessarily, didn't see any references in the many of our ordinances or such that it actually referenced scenic views or scenic view or scenic vista. We talk about scenic coastal areas, which you've already shown us here is CD 2.2. But do we, do we need to define this or can we just leave it out?
I think my inclination would be to not define scenic views at this point, because I think that is, you know, it's one of those terms that's fairly self-explanatory. And right now, we're only looking at policy levels. We don't have any regulatory standards for scenic views. And even view probably doesn't normally need to be defined, but because we're regulating it in the views and vegetation ordinance, it needed to be defined for that purpose. So I would say that unless it's something that's going to be specifically regulated, I think these are probably terms that don't need a definition because you can go to Merriam-Webster and, you know, it's kind of a common, common law, kind of common knowledge definitions for those that you would, that you would use. So then that would, it would give you a little bit more flexibility, probably if you don't specifically define it in the design review process to consider other types of views as opposed to just, you know, coastline and ocean.
Perfect. That one's done.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, I guess we, in these different ordinances that reference scenic views, maybe we should just drop scenic from in front of it and just have views. I don't know if we can make changes to those at this point or not, but and then it's not, it's just the same view term that we use anywhere else.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I think that staff is recommending that maybe we don't try to define this very tightly right now. And I would tend to agree. And I think we've pretty much pinned down what we think a view is. And I think that if we have to come back, certainly after we get comments from coastal commission staff, that we can then take a look at this in more detail or in a different way if we need to. But right now, I think, Trevor, I think your recommendation makes some sense. Leave it, leave it out and we'll, if we have to, we'll deal with it after the comments come back. I think Diane, you have your hand up, yes?
So I just want to make sure that there is a distinction between coastal views and private views. And I know the coastal commission is just concerned with public views, but being, and, you know, a 46-year resident, my views are gone. My private residence views are gone and I can't get the good neighbor people to do what they need to do unless we get some major vegetation removal ordinances. So I'm not really happy with the scenic view thing. I think it's over wording, but I want to make sure that we talk about views because they're being taken away. Okay, that's all.
I agree. And I did mention that in the design guidelines. So the next item.
Yes, thank you.
That might be a question for coastal commission staff, how we deal with private versus public views. Because we, we don't want private views in the certified portion of the LCP, but we still want to include both public and private views as part of the design review process. So what is the best way to do that, I think is a question for the coastal commission staff, might have some suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the issue of scenic slash views? Okay, we'll move on then to OWTS definitions on page five. So
There is one more view issue and that's scenic area. So if, if, I mean, if the planning commission wants the ability to designate an area as particularly scenic, that has higher protections and standards around it, then that would be one that I would suggest that we define is a scenic area. And then within that area, the standards are a little higher. So if you want that option, that would be, that one, I think, is a little bit different. And it depends on whether you want to be able to designate something like that.
I guess personally, I don't think that we need that as to be able to designate something like that.
Any other comments from anybody? Yeah, I tend to agree. I'm not sure we need to define that. I think we've got ourselves pretty well covered with what we have already between views and vegetation, between ordinances and the way we've defined and set up, you know, the issue regarding view, views. So I would agree with Tristan. I don't think we need to designate specific scenic areas, nor do I think we need to get into all the bureaucratic process of having to come up with all the special rules and regulations that would entail. Any other comments on that? Diane? I can't see you, but you're on mute.
Yeah, it's tough. And now I don't have the screen, but it was view shed and what other view, view vistas? So we just need to look at that wording because view shed is, is, is a big issue.
I guess I missed the first part of what you were saying. Are you?
Well, they talked, they talked about view shed and view vistas. It was, I have to go back because now I, I don't have the screen, you know, I'm playing. Okay, let's see. It was scenic vista. And view shed would be in the scenic area, I guess. That's what they're trying to tell us.
I think view shed is probably
Covered in the views and vegetation ordinance?
I think view shed is probably something that doesn't necessarily need a definition because that's probably view shed is, it's like a watershed. It's from wherever you're standing, it would encompass whatever the view is from a certain point. And I don't think that we have any regulatory standards for view sheds at this point that would warrant a definition.
Unless it's the neighbor that has the rights because they were there before the general plan, I guess, in 1976 or 78. I think there's something in that policy with view shed. I mean, I, I don't have my stuff here, you know, my, my planning commission binder, so I'm not sure. Yeah, I'll just go along with what everybody else is doing. I'm fine.
I think that's probably covered in the views and vegetation ordinance and
That's what I thought, yeah.
Design, the design criteria as well. Okay.
Okay. Any, anything else on views? At all? Okay, moving on to OWTS definitions. I'll kick this off because I had a question. The you have a couple of different definitions of repair. And what I was a little confused about, Trevor, is in, again, I'm on page five. I'm in the first paragraph under OWTS definitions, the last sentence, which says, I would suggest that the primary distinction is whether the improvement increases the capacity of a system beyond the permitted development of the OWTS serves. I'm interpreting that to mean that an improvement, for example, of an OWTS that's sized for three bedrooms, if it was improved to make it viable for four bedrooms, that that would be considered an increase improvement in the, sorry, a improvement in the system beyond the permitted development? Is that how you're defining that?
I think it's actually a little bit from the other direction. So it's looking at the actual structure and what is, so if it's, if it's a structure that either predates the zoning ordinance, so say it's a structure that predates the zoning ordinance and it has, has three bedrooms in it. So we would consider that legally having permitted as three bedrooms, but their septic system is undersized for three bedrooms and they want to expand their septic system to accommodate three bedrooms. That would be okay because it's only being upgraded or improved to serve the existing development as opposed to, you know, someone who wants to, maybe like what you said, they have a two-bedroom system and maybe they, they, you know, want to convert an office into a bedroom. And so they want to upgrade their septic system to a three-bedroom system. That would be development that requires a permit. Does that make sense?
And so then how do you distinguish between making an improvement and an OWTS modification?
Well, I think that's a good question. That's what we need to talk about. I, you know, and it's, and, you know, I want to have a conversation with coastal commission staff about this. I don't know. I mean, they've taken it to the point where apparently, based on talking to coastal commissions, I mean, health department staff, that I heard of a recent example in, I don't know if it was Ferndale or Fortuna, and there's a failed tank. It's, it's cracked, it's leaking, there's, there's surfacing effluent. And they just want to put in a new tank of the same size right next to the old tank, and then they would fill in the old tank. And they're requiring a coastal development for that, which means six months of surfacing effluent. And I think that's nuts. I think that's repair and maintenance. So, you know, I have a feeling that this is going to be a long and difficult conversation with coastal commission staff about this.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I see your point. Clearly, in the case that you've just described, I would look at that very, I would just say that that's a repair. I mean, you're just replacing
It's replacement in kind. And just because it's adjacent doesn't make it not maintenance, but I'm, I'm going to make that argument and see what they say. But I think other things like, so you know, you have an undersized septic system and you want to add a pre-treatment unit. You know, I, you know, that, that kind of thing, I think, is gray area where that's going to fall. You know, if you have a, if you have a pit and you add leach lines, where does that fall? And I don't have good answers for that. And I, you know, I'd like to get your input so that when I talk to coastal commission staff, I can maybe push, push back a little bit based on your input.
Aaron?
Yeah, I tend to, I guess my take on it is, you know, like the situation you described, I agree with Richard, that's, that's a repair. You know, a piece of your system's failing, you're just repairing it. The other thing I want to, maybe you can feel out the coastal commission for is, you know, my understanding is within town, we still have a number of systems that are you know, well behind the curve of acceptable standards for septic systems worthy to be installed today. Some existing pits and, you know, that kind of stuff. And I'd like to make sure that when this is all done, that if somebody wants to improve it and create, you know, cleaner effluent coming out of their system, that we don't discourage that. I think that's important. I don't want to add delay and cost and that kind of stuff unnecessarily when that's the right thing to do, given, you know, the ASBS off the coast. And, you know, I mean, all the reasons that we know we have this OWTS program. So maybe you can really kind of push and feel them out on that issue too. Kind of the two issues, just the repair, which hopefully is pretty straightforward, and then kind of bringing up to current standards or, you know, enhancing what they have in place. So they're just kind of my two thoughts on it. Even though I, you know, I do get going from a pit to a leach system, probably from a technical standpoint, maybe takes it from, you know, a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom or something, but you know, there's a whole separate process that could potentially stop that from happening, right, in the rest of our
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, I occasionally get Yeah, I agree. And, you know, I, I occasionally get, um, you know, comments and, and noises from coastal commission staff about our current process where I, you know, if someone wants to u- upgrade their pit to leach lines, I, I don't require coastal development permits. Um, coastal commission staff disagrees. They have not pushed the issue, you know, in terms of trying to enforce that with the city at this point. Um, but I think as we update our regulations, we are going to have to address that issue and make it um, make it clear in the ordinances. And, and that's one of the reasons I really want, um, you know, an administrative permit process. Because at least if we have to require a coastal development permit for something like that, at least we can do an administrative process, which is a little bit faster, a little bit more abbreviated for that. Um, you know, I, I think there's also the potential for emergency permits. Like the example where I said there's actually surfacing influ- effluent. I don't know why they didn't just issue an emergency permit that's effective immediately. And then they can do the repair and then they come back for the coastal development permit later. Um, so I think those are a couple of options, um, that we'll ha- probably have to incorporate. Um, but yeah, I, to me, if you're not expanding the capacity of your system, if you're just bringing it up to code and bringing it up to serve an existing use, I don't want to discourage that. That's exactly, um, my, my feelings.
Uh, yeah, I agree with that. And I think to add on to that, um, I, I would maybe I think it's important that we also note that like, if someone wants to improve their system, that, you know, from a pit to a leach system, they maybe don't need to be saddled with developing or like testing for a full reserve and like having to go through that process either. Because I think that can just, that could be another hurdle that might stop someone from doing something. Um, and so making some exa- an exemption for that or something like that.
And that we, there, we do have that currently, or I should say the, the health department does. So the health department, um, you know, they're, they're, um, they are pretty flexible. So, you know, something with a pit is basically considered failed. Um, and so someone can come in for a repair, which, which usually means that the health department can actually design the repair. They, they fit in the best they can based on, you know, just sort of a hand texture soil analysis. Um, design the system, um, but it doesn't require all the engineering and the perk testing and, and the reserve area and, and all that. So that is currently, um, part of environmental health regulations.
Gotcha.
So I guess what I'm hearing Trevor is that, um, the feeling, well, put words in our mouth. Um, I, I think the feeling is that we would like this to be as flexible as possible with the intent of being able to allow people to upgrade, repair, uh, do minor maintenance with the least amount of, of, um, uh, oversight and permitting required. Um, and, and so that's the way I'm, I'm seeing this going. And, uh, and again, if anyone else has a, a, a comment differently or, or whatever. But I, I think that would be what we would recommend for you to take to the coastal commission. Any dissenters on that or any, uh, Diane?
So I'm thinking the city is, I don't know if they're monitoring this. Who's got, what kind of OWTS are they getting their tanks pumped out? When we used to get a note and a fee, you know, fifty-dollar fee per year, nothing's happening. So that definitely needs to be monitored because with all the vacation rentals and different remodels and adding bedrooms or kids or re- you know, it needs to be monitored and it's not. So I don't know whose job that is. I'm all for the administrative permits that, uh, Trevor can give people, but this thing has to be monitored and the ones that haven't upgraded, I mean, mine's what, seven years now? Five years? I think it's almost seven. And nothing's happened for five years. And this June, I'm getting it pumped. But, you know, Anton and Gabe need to look into that, Trevor, and somehow monitor it. Because it's not being done.
I have some good news for you Diane. Um, you know, the, the OWTS permitting has always been near the top of my list, but it keeps getting other things keep getting put on top of it, and I only have so much time. Um, we have been, um, all the, all the short-term rentals all have regular inspections and they maintain their, their permits. That's part of their licensing. Um, all development applications that come through, we, we make sure they have a permit and have their system inspected and, and upgraded if needed. Um, and property sales. So we're also monitoring the property sales and making sure OWTS gets inspected and, and potentially upgraded at that, at those times. So we have been doing that over the years. Um, Jennifer is going to be um, taking over the, the implementation of this program. So, um, you will later this year. Um, we're, we're in the midst of planning, um, a September, a septic awareness month. Um, and we're gonna start rolling out more, more letters and, um, getting those inspections and all those operating permits out. So, um, that is, that is in the works and, um, it's a very, very good thing and it's, it is overdue. Thank you.
Great. Sounds good. Um, any other comments on OWTS? Uh, looking at page six as well. Okay, hearing none, we can, let's see, uh, Steph, okay, we talked about, uh, everything there. And okay, so looking at the, um, the draft, um, CDP exemption and exclusions, you had a question, uh, or a comment for coastal commission, which is on page one. And, um, I assume that that will be, you'll, you'll take that to the coastal commission and see what's happening there.
Yeah, so the blue highlights are, are notes sort of to myself for, um, to talk to coastal commission staff.
Got it. Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Uh, yes, Aaron?
Um, just kind of an overarching question, Trevor, on an organization of this section. Um, it took me a couple of reads through to finally pick up on this and it finally clicked for me, made sense that, you know, A is single family. B is, you know, other types of structures, and then everything after that applies to both, right? So I didn't know if there was an opportunity to make that more clear or, you know, put it section A and then have that be applies to both single family and commercial residences. And then after that, kind of spell out the two subsections. I, I don't know if that makes sense a lot. I'm overthinking it, but um, might make it a little cleaner for folks trying to figure it out.
Yeah, I think we could do something like that.
Okay. Any other comments on, on page one? Moving on to page two. Couple of other comments that you're going to coordinate with coastal commission. Any other commission questions or comments on page two? Moving on to page three. Uh, you asked, uh, up, up in, uh, on page three, item H. I, um, was reading your comment there, TP four. And, um, I believe that, oh, well, I, I, I basically agree with your comments that, uh, for, uh, Trinidad, it's probably a very good idea. And, um, understand that, um, the next comment, TP five R four, uh, that there's more work that's going to have to be done on that, yes.
Yeah, that's about all I was looking for, for, for that one is, you know, whether we, a- and I think we've, we've already determined that we want to look at water use as part of the permitting process. So I think it's, it's probably appropriate, um, to exclude that from a certain amount of water use from, from the exemptions, but we'll have to kind of narrow down what that means.
And obviously that will be something that we can coordinate with the, uh, water advisory committee. And, uh, Tom?
Unless, unless it was tied to some kind of fire suppression. Which is being done in Tahoe area.
That would be, I think when we, um, when we start to develop, you know, what does substantial increase in water use mean? Um, that I think that is, would be a sort of an appropriate exclusion.
Yeah, is it routine increase or, you know, that kind of stuff? And thank you for adding potable in there too. So that way if people get, you know, rain systems or whatever, they can deal with that.
Okay, anything else on, uh, page three? Okay, moving on to four. Anything on page four? Page five.
I just had a couple of questions, uh, regarding, uh, item four at the top there. Do we need to add a line item for ADUs as well as JADUs? Uh, separate, I, I didn't know if that was necessary there or not.
So ADUs are not going to be exempt. Um, the coastal commission considers ADUs to be development. So ADUs sort of have their own permitting process. Um, but yeah, I think JD, JADUs have the potential to be exempt.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, two more questions. One just kind of a, it came up reading the intro paragraph for CDP exclusions right there on page five. Um, but just kind of a, maybe putting in a reminder line for things like this that, um, exemptions, exclusions, you know, while excluded exempted from CDP, other city permits may still be required. Just, I think I saw that language somewhere and I really liked that. Just for folks to, this doesn't mean you can do whatever you want without a permit. It's just this one particular very specific, you know. Um, and then under A four, um, I didn't know if the, I haven't had a chance to ever look at the California invasive plant council's list, but I don't know if that Humboldt link, the one to the Humboldt one I sent you would be more appropriate for a specific invasive species. Um, for the rest of the commissioners, I came across a list of invasive species for the, for Humboldt. And it's got an electronic, uh, link to a, a book that I forget what organization made it, but I sent that Trevor's way. So I don't know if that would be more appropriate one, or at least add that in there too. That was all on page five.
Okay, that, the link you sent me, that was the California invasive plant council. It was the Humboldt, Humboldt consortium of that group. They just took theirs and put their brand on it. Got it, okay.
I just had one, uh, quick, uh, item that I would want to just make sure I understood, and that is A two. Removal of trees with multiple trunks that each have an aggregate of less than twenty inches D V H. Um, the phrase there that each have, that, that is per uh, multiple trunk trees. In other words, the combination of one or more trunks um, uh, has to have an, uh, combination of less than twenty inches D V H. Is, uh, is that the way I, uh, uh?
I think that each should be removed. So trunks that have an aggregate of less than twenty inches, because each each wouldn't make, each wouldn't make sense there.
But, but that's what was getting a little confusing, yeah. Okay.
Oh, I did have one other. Is A five, um, necessary for us? Within the city limits? I know you said that these, you kind of listed the, the shopping list, so to speak, for us, and you wanted us to.
Maybe not. I, I am aware of one three-acre conversion that happened up on Berry Road.
Okay. The, the potential's there in the sphere of influence and yeah, let's keep it. I just was curious, okay.
Yeah, I think that it's fitting.
I agree.
Sorry, I had to step away there. I, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, there was a comment about five?
Yeah, I was just curious if it fit our needs and it sounds like the consensus is yes, it does. It's worth keeping in there.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anything else on page five? Okay, moving on to six. Anything on page six?
I had a question about D one, just the logistics of tracking that. Um, you know, up to two struc- structures are exempted, additional accessory structures still require CDP. I- is there, you know, a decent mechanism or what would that look like? Are we setting ourselves up to, you know? I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but.
That's a good question. I mean, I guess it's one of those things where, I mean, it's not, you know, like any kind of enforcement, the city's not going to be walking around counting your, your structures, but if a neighbor complains, you know, um, then, then we get into it. Um, or, or maybe you don't want to put a limit on, on the number of structures. I mean, less than a hundred and twenty square feet, that's pretty small. Um, as long as the maximum lot coverage, um, is not exceeded, may, maybe you don't, maybe we don't want to limit the, the number of structures.
I, I need to have to learn by one person getting away with it, and then we have to make an ordinance to, to not let it happen again. You know, which is how a lot of rules get made.
Yeah, I, I'm inclined to, uh, leave it the way it is. Um, uh, not only for Tom's, Tom's, uh, rationale, but also, um, I think that it gives us a, a little bit, i- in this case, I think a little bit more control is necessary.
Is there any flexibility there with regard to the total square footage of these um, small structures, like?
So the, the hundred and, and twenty square feet is based on, um, building permit. So anything above a hundred and twenty square feet requires a building permit.
So that's a hundred and twenty square feet per structure?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
So the way this is written then is that you could have two hundred and forty square feet of small structures the way it's written right now.
Yeah.
Got it. So, uh, is there a consensus? We leave it alone? Okay, looks like it. Um, the, the, you, you, you asked a question up on TP six. And you said this, this might be more appropriate for an administrative permit. And, um, whether or not we should have an administrative permit or leave it exempt. And, um, I tend to, maybe I'm being overly cautious, but I think I'd like to leave it exempt at least for this, this period or this point. Uh, if the discussion comes back from the coastal commission differently, then, then we certainly can address it at that point.
Yeah, I was gonna say that might be more of a question for the coastal commission, I get, but it was also, you know, my inclination is maybe to leave it exempt, but I, you know, just using the example of the lake. Do you think you needed to see that or could that have been an, an exemption? So that's just one way to think about it. Um, but the coastal commission may have something to say about this one.
Oh yeah, I'm sure.
So just, just, oh, sorry, go ahead Tristan.
I was gonna move on, are you, I was gonna move on to TP seven.
Oh, sorry, I just had something on six then. Um, I, I guess my question, kind of my train of thought, I just lost it. Um, is, I don't know, I'm, I'm inclined to kind of want to see lot line adjustments come before us. Because I just think those could be contentious, um, in the, in the right circumstances between neighbors. Um, uh, parcels, that kind of stuff. Um, so if this were to become administrative, would this still be something that would show up in that consent calendar concept that we've talked about, Trevor? So we would still get it at least in that way?
Yes.
Okay, then that's fine. As long as it would come before us, before it were made official, then I'm very comfortable with that.
But so right now it's an exclusion, so it would not come before you where it is now. And so that was my question is, do you, would you like to see it as an administrative permit and you would? Are there any other thoughts on that?
Um, oh. Go ahead Tristan.
A lot of the properties in Trinidad were built right on the property line. So if they are, it might not be an administrative permit. It might have to be, you know, a planning commission decision with the lot line, if there's not a lot of property. And there's going to be a remodel or an ADU or.
Well, and there are some, some caveats. So you can't increase non-conformity, so you can't, you know, go less than the five foot setback. Things like that. And, and still fall under an exemption.
Okay. So the sheds and the gazebos, that area, what about water? Are they going to ask for more water? If there's more buildings?
Hopefully not, because those shouldn't be living spaces. I mean, a greenhouse, but that's, that's not necessarily any different from landscaping.
Okay. Yeah, because I know Moonstone Heights is having some issues with parcels and water and not wanting to pay. And I just didn't know what our, our codes were for that. Okay.
Tristan, you can go in.
Going, okay, and I'm going to go back to TP6. I guess my opinion is that in the instance where someone's doing a lot line adjustment that just makes things more conforming, as, as the example you gave, I don't think that's something we need to see. But as, as Aaron noted, if it were, I guess in the instance where somebody's trying to do a lot line adjustment that's not conforming, we would, we would see that already.
Yeah, as, and, and we could add more caveats to this too, to kind of further limit what kind of lot line adjustments would be excluded. So that might be one, that might be a way to compromise in terms of, you know, keep, keeping certain lot line adjustments as, you know, if someone's, you know, the kind of lot line adjustment where the fence wasn't built on the property line until you adjust the properly, I'm just to match the fence. You know, those, those kinds of things aren't, aren't, probably don't need to come before the planning commission.
Okay. So maybe there's a little bit more work that you're going to do on that, that particular issue. Okay?
Yeah, and I, I think that is one where, where the Coastal Commission might have, have something to say as well. So let's, let's see what they have to say, and then I'll make a note that we need to revisit that.
Okay. Anything else on page six?
Yeah, I, I want to, I guess TP7, Trevor, you're recommending.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. That would reduce the amount of grading or filling to 25 yards. I mean, is there, is there any, do you have a particular reason for that, other than it seems like a lot? 50 yards seems like a lot.
No, I mean, I've, I've seen a variety of examples. You know, I could, I could look at additional examples, but it just seemed like, yeah, four to five dump truck loads is, is maybe a lot for an exclusion. But I'm, you know, it's currently 50 cubic yards. So we could, we could leave it at the status quo.
I, I guess I would be in favor of just leaving it as is.
Yeah, I mean, I, if there haven't really been any significant issues within town, within city limits involving the 50, then is it, might not be worth troubling the Coastal Commission and changing it. And I, I'm not sure there's a whole lot of potential for that to really be an issue on what's left unbuildable in the city limits as well necessarily. Just a gut feeling, no empirical evidence whatsoever for that.
Okay. Sounds like maybe we'll just leave that alone for the time being, and we'll see where we go from there. Anything else on six? Page six? Okay, page seven?
I guess my other comments, so I just, for the accessory structures, I wanted you to think about heights and areas. So if there are no comments, I'll assume you're okay with what's in there. And then I did notice that these are very kind of residentially oriented and, and whether we want to include some more commercial kinds of examples.
Oh, you mean like a shed that someone would keep their commercial dumpster in kind of thing?
Yeah, like, yeah, exactly. So, yeah, dumpster, shed, a refrigeration unit. You know, at, at the, at the park, you know, some playground equipment or a bocce ball court. Are those accessory structures? Do, do we think we need to add, or are these examples? I mean, I could add a number eight that says other accessory structures deemed, you know, similar and compatible to the above examples or something like that.
I mean, I would, the last sentence in the introductory paragraph, examples include but are not limited to. I think we've got our, our opportunity there to handle if something were to come up and we're like, no, 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 no. These were just examples, you know, and we can, we can capture it then.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on six? Okay. Now we're on seven. Anything on page seven? You've had a question regarding percentage of the freestanding solar panels.
Yeah, so I use 10% because, and that, that is the exemption for, you can add on to an existing structure as long as you're not increasing the square footage or height by more than 10%, and that comes from the coastal act regulations. So that's where I got the 10% from. But it does seem, you know, it, it puts a single story structure at somewhat of a disadvantage, and they're already lower than a two-story structure. So I just thought I'd throw that out there for consideration.
And just, I'm on the same page. We're talking about, for example, the height that you would need to incline a panel to, to maximize the efficiency, right? Is there any one or any, do we have any resources we could reach out to and kind of find out what the average is in our area? Is there kind of an average that happens on most of the roofs in town? I, I don't know, just think it's we could get more realistic number that.
Yeah, and I think there is some, some flexibility and there is also, and, and maybe this is something else I should discuss with the Coastal Commission, because there is a state, there is a California Solar Rights Act. And so local jurisdictions can't make permitting solar panels too onerous. And so maybe, and I know the Coastal Commission has dealt with solar panels, so they may have some advice on that.
Cool.
I just had one kind of offbeat comment and question. We, we talk, we're, we're talking panels in all of these instances, but I do know that there is at least one in the city limits of, and it's called something like a solar daisy or whatever. And the one I'm thinking of is on Scenic Drive, and it's big. Now, it's not bigger than the family or the single family structure. But if this was not considered as part of what we're trying to do with solar panels, we may, we may find that we've got a hole here, because I think that thing is at least, oh boy, I bet that's 15 feet tall just where it is. And of course, then it would depend on mounting and location, et cetera. But anyway, I was just wondering if there's any consideration, or maybe it falls under this, this whole thing of, of the solar requirements at the state level that we need to just make sure we're covered.
I, I do, I did review that with, with the building official at the time, and we kind of had to figure out what to do with it. And I think it, it met, it was under the size limits for building an accessory, an exemption for an accessory structure. So I, I said it would be exempt under that. And so, and, and there, there's another place on, off Ewing that has some free, it's not one of the, it's not the sunflower thing, but it's, it's a, they're freestanding solar panels. And we did re, redo, review the height of those. And so this does have a, for freestanding solar panels, less than 12 feet in, in height. So that should cover that.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Anything else on page seven? Diana?
So I'm thinking, Trevor, you put minor improvements, but the stormwater was a major improvement for the city.
Yes, and that went through coastal development permits.
Okay, so that's however, that line takes care of that?
Yeah, so, yeah, again, so it's more, and, and, you know, our ordinance is currently silent on, on this kind of stuff. And so it's really not clear where that line is for what requires a coastal development permit. So sometimes we look at the, the grading, the area of disturbance, 1,000 square feet or 50 cubic yards. But yeah, I think this just makes it a little bit more clear that, you know, adding a sidewalk or a bike lane or something like that, traffic control signs don't require a coastal development permit.
But the stormwater did.
Yes, because of the size.
Oh, it was huge. And there were 20 dump trucks going back and forth, but it looks good down on the beach. So the parking lot was major, wasn't any minor.
That's right.
Rehab. Okay, I just wondered why they were minor instead of major, some of them.
Anything else on page seven?
I guess my only question there was, you know, should some of the exceptions to exclusions apply to all of the exclusions or some of the exclusions? Just in my own mind, I was trying to figure out why I, oh, because I guess so temporary, so the minor improvements, I excluded, you know, so if you're doing some repaving down on Edward Street, you know, that might be in an area of either slope or, you know, close to the beach, where there would be an exclusion, but I think that that would still be fine. And then the, the temporary events and temporary structures, those can still occur you know, on steeper slopes or on, you know, a, a beach. Well, yeah, I don't know if, I'm not sure two shouldn't apply to all of them. So it was just a question for consideration. Should, should some of the exceptions not apply to certain exclusions?
Silence is golden, but are you making it, are you suggesting a change, Trevor? Or?
I might relook at number two and see if I really think that EF and G shouldn't be subject to those. My reasoning might have been because there's already some, you know, temporary events would include something like a wedding on Trinidad State Beach, which that does, could affect public use and public access, but the Coastal Commission has, already has some guidance related to that. So that, that was probably my reasoning, but I'm, I'm not sure that they should really be treated any differently. So I might revisit and it's just going to be, the exceptions apply to all of them, I, I think would be where I would lean.
Okay, and when you say all of them, referring to?
The exclusions.
The exclusions.
A, A through G.
Okay.
Is, is there a definition, Trevor, or generally accepted one for significant period of time, so I can get to B, the one that precludes public access? I'm just, I'm just curious, is there kind of a standard for that, or, you know, day over day? I don't know what event that would be and what it would look like, but it just kind of caught my eye.
Yeah, that's, that is a good question, and I, I probably stole this from somewhere, so I can look back and see if, if that's defined, or if that, it might even be, because the Coastal Commission does have guidelines for the exclusion of temporary events. And I think it addresses that kind of thing. So I'll look back and see if there's a better definition of that. And then I can just add that into that section. So, you know, days, weeks, whatever that is.
Okay.
And I think the city has knows when they, when people need to get the permit, city permits for temporary events. You know, whether it's going to be down by the marine lab or down on state beach or in the park, I think. I think people have applied for permits. We'd have to ask Gabe.
Yeah, I don't think the city really has a, a permit process. So, you know, I know the, the city does have a film ordinance, so if someone wants to film a movie, they have to get some permits. And then there might be an encroachment permit. I'll have to ask Gabe what they do about weddings. But you know, the, the art market, the fish festival. You know, tho, those kinds of things in most cities require some sort of permit that kind of dictates, you know, performance standards basically for those kind of events.
And then our upcoming Trinidad community rummage yard estate sale, the whole community's having one.
Maybe, I mean, that's.
I don't know, I don't know if they have to have a permit or what, but.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think we should consider, you know, temporary event permits in our regulations when we get to that.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot of action here.
Tristan, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so with 2A, a development located on slope over 25%, would, I mean, would non-major vegetation removal on slope over 25% be considered development? Or should we leave subsection A out of that exclusion?
Yeah, I think that would be the idea is that non-major vegetation removal on steep slopes would not be excluded. I think there are some good reasons for that, because of stability and vegetation maintaining stability. But yeah, again, you know, removing blackberries maybe shouldn't fall under that, but that's, that's. Any other thoughts on that? I think that's something to think about more.
Might be a place to tie into invasive. I don't know, hate to bring that back into, but you know, anything doing that is, I think, worth allowing. Unless there's a legitimate slope, slope stability issue, because I mean, even though it's not native, it might still be providing some support.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, removal of trees, for example, is, is not something we want to, you know, even if they're small, maybe not allow on steep slopes. And, and maybe that's, you know, a, a question for a professional, maybe a geologist can, can provide some advice on, on that, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it, I mean, I could see that certainly if it was a, what's mapped as a geo hazard area or whatever we call it. But maybe, maybe not. I mean, 12, 25% isn't, isn't that steep, I guess, in, in my opinion. But, yeah, I guess we can continue to think about that. But, yeah, I guess we can continue to think about that.
I will make a note to revisit that.
Okay. Moving on to administrative coastal development permits. Page one, there were a couple of questions and on the sidebar here, so let's see, um. Oh, yeah, um, you asked a question on the height limit. And also on signs there and under applicability.
I guess I had a question on TP one. I'm I'm trying to understand, I guess, your question. That's my question. Um, I mean, we have by ordinance, a a limitation on heights. Correct?
Well, the height, the height limit in terms of a a residential structure would be twenty-five feet. Currently, in the design review criteria, which is sort of a weird place for it, it says basically, a person has a right to build at least a hu- a fifteen hundred square foot house that's fifteen feet in height, regardless of whether it blocks views.
Right.
And so that's where I pulled out the fifteen hundred square feet, and then I added the potential to affect views. Maybe the, maybe we incorporate that fifteen foot height limit, you know, maybe sixteen feet is is, I think, a more common height limit for like garages and accessory structures. But anyway, so that was my question is whether we wanna just leave it as potential to affect views, or do we wanna say anything up to a certain height is fit?
Tristan?
Um, I think we can leave it with potential to affect views, and then I guess that the planner could, it would just be a little bit more of a discretionary just more discretion.
Yeah, so this is, these are um administrative permits would still require an application and a staff report, and then they come to the planning commission as like a consent agenda item, so a neighbor could come and say, hey, this is gonna block my view, and then it gets pulled and becomes design review. So I think that's fine.
I say leave it at fifteen feet. It's been like that for a long time. Let's not make any new numbers.
Well, we we, that would make it consistent with the other ordinance. Uh, however, uh, since this is an administrative CDP, uh, what we're trying to do is to give the um, the administrator some latitude in how to um uh, do C, uh, C administrative CDPs. So that's, that that I think is why Trevor chose the word she did um, in um, saying that um, you know, it doesn't i- impact the views. Uh, I could go either way.
I could have both. I could, you know, or or maybe it's really a single story, I guess, you know, envision a fifteen hundred square foot two-story house on on Berry Road that wouldn't have potential to affect coastal views. You know, do you want that? I mean, again, you could, you could decide to pull that permit, so maybe, yeah, maybe the height limit doesn't matter.
Thoughts on pulling the word coastal from two, so there's just potential to affect views? Do we, is that? I guess you have, you have
You know, I I would be, so one of the things the planning commission has struggled with the most over the years is view issues. And I'm, you know, I would be cautious of opening that can of worms up for trees, you know. There's lots of trees, um, people don't necessarily live in Trinidad for trees. I I'm just, you can, I, you know, it's it's totally up up to you, but I would just as by as caution that you're gonna run into, well, I, you know, I like to look at that maple tree over there.
Right, no, for sure. Um, I, you know, to me, it's more the redwoods, the surrounding redwoods, that's kind of the the ones that are of more concern to me. So just a hypothetical, right, somebody on on ocean, right, uh, mid-block somewhere, they're gonna build a new house there, right? Um, and they wanna build a two-story where there's, because we have primarily one stories through the majority of town. I- is there a pathway that that would ever be granted an administrative CDP? And only show up as a consent calendar? And even if it did follow that pathway, would there still be notice given to the neighbors that there was an administrative CDP coming for their adjacency?
Yeah, so I I think I could envision, you know, a a small house and they wanna I mean, you know, pu- put a second story on it or something, um. And you know, if it was far enough north, where I sort of thought, okay, I don't think this is gonna affect somebody's view of the ocean, yes, I might, you know, I I could, I could envision that scenario. But yes, it would still require notification to the neighbors, and it would be on the planning commission's consent agenda, and you could someone could raise objections, or the planning commission can raise objections and vote to pull that off the administrative agenda.
I just wanna make sure we're not setting up a system where someone is all of a sudden surprised that what the the light coming into their home changes, which I know we're, but anyway, okay, so long as there's notification, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just trying to walk that example through our um, plus process flow chart to see how it worked. And um, yeah, it would, it gets reported to the planning commission at the next available hearing. And then there's an appeal period, of course, and then um, uh, you know, we would, we would have an opportunity to see it then a- as part of the report to the commission. Is that the way I'm interpreting that, Trevor?
That's correct. So an administrative permit, um, you know, normally wouldn't be discussed at the planning commission meeting. But if if it got pulled, then it would come back for design review.
Okay. Got it. Anything else on page one of administrative CDPs? Yes, Tristan?
Um, on A seven, lot line adjustments that do not reduce result, do you do lots? I mean, do lot line adjustments ever result in new lots?
I don't really see how that's possible, but that is always, that's always the language that is found in ordinances. Um, and and maybe the caveat on there is any new buildable lots. I think, and and may, um, because, like, for example, uh, apparently that large, I thought it was one property on Underwood, but that be, there's a big three acre parcel on Underwood, and apparently that is for lots. Um, and so they wanna do a lot line adjustment, but currently the house is built crossing two lots. So a lot line adjustment is going to create a a new buildable lot. Um, and so that's the kind of thing where I think should have a coastal development permit.
Okay, so maybe maybe it should read new buildable lots, I guess.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, because yeah, I I can't imagine how a lot line adjustment would create a new lot. There's also a couple of spots where there are these little sliver locks, and I don't know if they're left over from easements or what, but if someone you know, and right now it's too small to be developable, and if they wanna do a lot line adjustment to make that lot developable, I think that's something that would require a a full permit.
Okay.
Real quick on B five, Trevor, are you comfortable with B five? I know that kind of can potentially put you in an awkward position. I I was just, is it worth having subjective language like that in an ordinance? Not that we're you know, lacking that in most of our ordinance.
I mean, to me, yes, because there are certain projects that I just know are gonna be controversial, and it it might be nice to just have the ability to say, hey, you're not gonna qualify for an administrative permit, you need a even though it looks on paper, otherwise you would qualify for an administrative permit.
Right.
Um, you know, I just know that that's not gonna go down, so why, why bother? Why waste the time?
Okay.
Tristan?
Yeah, so, um, Trevor, for the B section, um, you were sort of asking how much of this, the city would actually be covered by all these various exclusions, which seems like a lot. I mean, I don't know if you have any further thoughts on that, but it, uh, they they do seem like that's a lot, a lot of the city that could fall into those zones.
Yeah, and n- normally what I see is if it's within the coastal commission appeal area, so areas where projects are appealable to the coastal commission, these administrative permits wouldn't apply. But that is gonna be most of the city. Um, and so I I I saw one example where they didn't just use the appealable area, so so I'm, I tried to pare it down, because I, you know, otherwise, what's, what's the point if if nothing qualifies? Um, so I'm, I am open to, um, you know, like I said, I'd I'd be interested to map and see where that actually falls, and then I think we could have a more informed discussion about that area. But I'm, I'm happy to, you know, I'm not, um, you know, I I don't necessarily feel strongly about all these criteria.
You mean, you don't want to do the permits administratively, you want to put them in the planning commission?
Yeah, so, um,
They're really sensitive. It's really sensitive building right now because it's a small city. You know, now we're gonna have ADUs, JADUs and parking and so I think just keep that where it says not an administrative permit.
Okay.
Because I I can see the the controversy, especially if somebody in the neighborhood doesn't get a notice. They'll ask me why.
Well, they will get a notice for administrative permits. Okay.
So Trevor, what 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 are you recommending? Do you wanna spend some time looking to see what's in, what areas are included? Or are we gonna leave it the way it is? What will you, what would you want?
I, you know, I'm I'm happy to take any input, but I think those those comments are probably more notes for myself, so I think instead of calling these exclusions, I'm gonna, they're gonna be e- exceptions. Although, I did include def- so I guess just the terminology of whether that is, because because we just reviewed coastal development permit exclusions, which are very different from these exclusions. Normally, we would, you know, there's the exceptions to the exclusions and exceptions to exemptions. But I think when I actually wrote a definition, I thought, I don't know if that fits either. So I guess that's more for me to think about what the best term there is, and then the note also, I I would like to see a map of this area. You know, and and then have another discussion about whether that area is appropriate. And I don't know if the coastal commission is gonna say, no, it has to be, anything in the appealable area is not administrative. Um, but like I said, I I did find one example of a certified ordinance that that was less than that, so um, this is what I'm going with until I hear otherwise from the coastal commission.
Okay. So it sounds like there's more work that will have to be done on that. Any other comments on page one? Page two. Couple of comments to the coastal commission or for the coastal commission discussion. Moving on to page three.
Oh, actually, uh, so I I, you're referencing a hearing um, in D, like D one and two. So I mean, with an administrative permit, is there really a hearing?
Excellent point, um. Yeah, I will let me look at that. I I, like I said, I did take these from another ordinance. Um, they might have used hearing, but that might not be because it's really not a hearing. May maybe before it's agendized.
I was gonna say, yeah, the actionable PC meeting would seem to be, in essence, the hearing, right, or in spirit?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, what what might be a little confusing is on our um, uh, process flow chart, uh, one of the block boxes is report to planning commission at next available hearing.
Ah, okay.
So that's the kind of maybe the word association and the way it is, the way it is. But good catch, Bear Tristan. Yeah, thank you. Okay, anything else on page two? Three. Moving on, page four. Anything on our spreadsheet for exemptions, exclusions and administrative CDP? Now that we figured out where the asterisks are, it makes makes a lot of sense.
Now, do you think those asterisks should be moved out of the table and below the table, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that, that would be my recommendation. Anything on the process flow chart? I had one comment, um, that, uh, I I like the chart. I think it answers a lot of questions. And certainly will give people, I think, an opportunity to understand how this whole thing goes together. But I thought that one thing that we might wanna do is as we walk through this and it, and we come down to report to planning commission at next available hearing, and then we go to the planning commission objects to the administrative CDP, I understand that. And then the arrow takes us back up to a determination that a full CDP is required. That makes sense, too, but I thought just for completeness, I would suggest we add one more box, which would be the, a box coming out of the CDP required, which would be planning commission review and disposition with public input. So to me, that kind of ties it all together, so that if you don't have, if if we object, there's a full CDP required, and it comes to the planning commission for a full up hearing, or something to that effect. Just my idea, maybe just making it a little more complete. Okay, anything else on um, the administrative CDPs? Okay, good work. All right, moving on, next agenda.
Just one quick question, are you guys okay with, um, after these changes and make a few notes for future review? Um, are you okay with me sending this to coastal commission staff and get their input at this point?
Thank you, I neglected to ask that. I meant to do that, yes.
Yeah, I'm absolutely fine with that. It's gonna come back to us again anyway, and I think you you kind of get our intent, at least mine, I feel.
I I agree. Diane?
And we have a break.
Certainly.
Okay.
It is seven forty-nine. Can we come back at seven? Not seven fifty, seven fifty-five? Six minutes?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're missing Tom and Diane, right? Well, let's, let's get started at least, Trevor, there, there's, if you could just give us a real quick staff report and then we can move into this.
Sure, so. I just continue to revise the design criteria as we discussed at the last meeting. You know, I, I think. Or there are some organizational issues with the criteria. Um, some of those notes are, are probably in the criteria. And then, you know, I've, I've had this. This suggestion in here for consideration. We haven't really talked about it in terms of. Could we sort of simplify the criteria to have a, you know, one or two. You know, encourage or, and then one or two prohibit and avoids. Some of them are already sort of set up that way. So just something to think about in terms of organization. That's, that's not the only option. Um, most of the definitions I've already talked about. I updated some of the, the definitions for, for dwellings and dwelling units. I think some of the definitions will need to. Continue to work on the ordinance and, and the regulations and. Sort of figure out. You know, re- revisit them to make sure that they're gonna accommodate what we need for those. Um, I did add definitions for exception, exclusion, exemption. Again, I think those are something that we're going to have to. Kind of continue to work on. And then the OWTS definitions, and then I did not edit the major vegetation removal definition. Cause that's, it still is what's in the, the land use plan, general plan glossary. And, you know, I don't know what of the caveats we're gonna include in there, if any. So. So yeah, oh, and then. Tom did draw up a. A diagram for the floor to area ratio. I had intended to. Send that to you. But yeah, it's great. I think, I think it'll work really well for this definition. Um, I just, I had screwed up my. My math a little bit, so I, I had to have him make, make a couple of revisions. But I think that will be very good. And. So yeah, so this is one I, you know, I'm not necessarily in a, in a huge hurry to get to the coastal commission. I do. I did bring up the issue of private versus public views, and I think that will be a conversation for the coastal commission in terms of. Um, how, how we deal with that in design review, because we do want to include both. And then I just continued to kind of try and. Combine and consolidate the design review. Criteria. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Very, very good. So again, maybe the easiest thing to do is just to walk through page by page and we'll see if we have comments and. Uh, provide any feedback that we can. So. Plowing right into it, chapter seventeen dash six zero, point six zero, design review. Um, any comments, clarifications on page one? Page two. Three. Four.
Can we go back to page three?
Certainly.
Um, I feel like we need to, are, or do you have, do we have enough? Definitions of various types of dwellings on there, or do we need to pare that down still?
Where, where, which, which, which you're referring to again, Tristan?
I guess. I mean. Dwelling unit and dwelling. Uh, I know we talked about this for an extent last month, but. Um, they seem.
Oh, you know, sorry, I'm looking at the actual ordinance. You're looking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, let me fast forward here.
Maybe I got it screwed up in my packet.
No, maybe my, I put my pages out of order. Sorry. All right, carry on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to page three of the definitions, definitely. Yeah, that was a question too.
Sorry.
Uh, let's see. Page four, I had a couple of comments just real fast. So my, my first comment is under E one, the new E one limit. The size of structures to maintain Trinidad's town character. We've always referred to ourselves as a small town or even a village. And I think that would be appropriate just to mirror that same. Description here. Town doesn't really give you any sense of why we're, why we're doing it that way. So. Just, just a, you know, kind of a comment there.
You prefer, I mean. I, you know, currently I think it's quaint, rustic, rural, small town fishing. I, I think we kind of did away with that for, well, it's just, you know, the character of Trinidad. But, um, yeah, maybe. Do you want small town character or just, or maybe just village instead of town?
Or what about just Trinidad's character? Just eliminate town entirely.
That, that's fine.
Or is that too big now?
It needs to be town because we're a town. On what page are we on, please?
Four of the design review criteria. Okay, thank you.
Uh, you know, I, I, I'm not hard over one way or the other. I think that. Personally. Taking town out, yes, there is a character to Trinidad, but I don't know that it adequately is described by just leaving it that way. But I'm not hard over it either way. Trevor, use your judgment. That's fine. A, a couple of comments too on. F two A. Again, we're into this situation where we say the extent of obstruction of a view compared to the extent when the property was purchased. By the, by a neighbor. Um, I, I, I understand that. But in the. With, with, within the context of, of the adjacent property could be a business as well. Or could be owned by someone other than a specific individual, you know, defined as a neighbor. So I, I was just looking for some words that would be a little more. Inclusive, if you will, something like adjacent parcel owner. Or something like that, but just, just to make sure that included businesses, even public. Government buildings, I think we might want to just make sure that they're included as well. But anyway, that's just a, a, a kind of a, a, a short comment. Anything else on page four?
Yeah, Richard, those, the structures are covered under number two. The other structures. You know, that you were talking about.
Covered under number two.
In views F. Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
So I don't think we need to add any more words and. We're not a village, you know, we're a town, so we need to put that out there instead of village.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, technically you're a city, but I, you know.
Well, city, yeah, we'll, we could put, but town and city are more, are closer together than. Village and town.
Okay, Diane, I'll go with what you're saying there. That's fine.
Uh, just a, a, a question on this whole thing, just to kind of take the, the temperament of the commission. I, I get the adjacency concern with views, but I could foresee a situation where because of positioning of structures on a lot. That the adjacent person might not have, I, I'm just throwing this out there for consideration. There's a way to make it more general, but where the adjacent property may not be impacted. But the next property or two properties over could be impacted and. I don't want to pin this down too specifically to where, well, you're not adjacent, you don't share property lines, so too bad, you, you, or, you know, I mean. There's, there's a balance to be struck here. I'm not sure where we want to head with that. I just want to kind of raise that point for us to think about as we proceed with this.
I, I agree, and I think, I mean, I looked at definitions of neighbor and it's, it's definitely not just adjacent. So I, I think. But I, I do like maybe the idea of neighboring property owner. That might be a little bit more, more appropriate. So not adjacent property owner, but neighboring property owner. And then, and then that kind of covers all different types of, of properties and owners.
Sounds good to me. Anything else on page four? Page five. Moving on to six.
Just a nice job, Trevor, on the roofing materials. I think that really kind of captures the spirit of what I was hoping to see. You know, where they can, I, I like that phrasing you put in there.
Yeah, I agree. Eight, seven. I had a question on TP eight, Trevor. This, this has to do with exterior lighting, I get that, but I was a little confused by your, your comment. Should this be a standard? I, I, I thought we were going to do that, or am I just missing a minute?
So I think, so. That's sort of the organizational issue I was getting at with these. So most of them, like if you look at. Oh, it's just retaining walls and fences and then one, two, or P paved areas, one, two, three. So. But then some of them, like signs just above it, M and N have these. Have some language that aren't in the list. And to me. For sake of consistency, um, you know, it's probably where some of these. You know, I, I copied these from various places and so that's probably a function. I think they should either all have an introductory sentence, or they should all not have an introductory sentence. So that my suggestion, I think, you know, maybe we all want to look, look through that with that in mind a little bit more, but I would suggest that signs, the number and size of signs shall be limited, should be number one. And for lighting, exterior lighting should be minimized subdued indirect should just be number one. And so that, that's what I was talking about there.
I see. Thank you. That, that, that's more clear now. And, and that's fine. Sounds good to me. Sure.
Yeah, I like the idea, Trevor, of removing that initial sentence and just putting it in the, you know, the numbers of the bullet points.
Anything else on page seven? Page eight. Okay, moving on to definitions, Tristan. Uh, page one of the definitions, anything on there? Anything on page two? Four.
I apologize, I did have something on two.
Okay, all right.
Uh, change of use. Um, this doesn't refer, or does this at all touch on, or does it need to, um, the, the allowed use by zone? Is that defined elsewhere?
There is, um, I believe one of the exemptions or exceptions talks about a, a, a change of use to a principally permitted use. So it has to be a principally permitted use. But that is a good question. You know, again, this is a definition I pulled from Fort Bragg because I thought it might be useful, but I haven't actually tracked it back to a specific regulation.
I'm just thinking, you know, the, the old church that we have, we had some discussion on a while ago. Was it a change of use? Was it not? I just want to make sure we're being clear with that and concise with our definitions.
And I think the question, you know, it will depend on how we have the regulations worded. So if a change of use requires a permit, then the definition should probably include that's not a principally permitted use maybe. But if the regulation says a change of use to a principally permitted use, then that doesn't need to be part of the definition. So some of that will depend on the actual regulation that this sort of tracks back to. So, um, I think we, you know, that's something, again, these, these definitions will all need to be revisited. You know, we're going to have to do a document search and see how they're all used, um, which is going to be a, a big task. But I think, you know, as as much as we can kind of keep them straight for now, that would be good. So I will see, um, I will look at that.
Okay. I'll retrace just a little bit. Anything on page three?
I will just speak to the, the dwellings. So, well, I didn't hear Tristan's entire comment, but yeah, I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure we need a definition for both dwelling and dwelling unit. Um, for now I left them in because they are actually in our regulations currently. Um, but I, you know, I, I do think that we will want definitions for single family, multifamily and accessory dwellings. So yeah, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree with that. It's just the dwelling versus dwelling unit.
I, and I agree. I think we probably don't need both. But it's, it's something that we'll have to go back and amend. You know, those, those sections of, of the ordinance where those are, because they are defined currently in two different ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
So I would imagine that the, the objective then would be to make it consistent throughout all of the ordinances and we'll use one or the other.
That's correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, anything else on page three? Page four. Five. Six.
I will go back to four and see if anybody had any thoughts on the exception, exclusion, exemption, you know, these might end up being specific to to CDPs or something. Like I said, I, I didn't find regulatory examples of these, so you know, how they you know, we'll probably have to think about them as we work through the regulations and look again at how they're used. But I just, um, any initial thoughts on these definitions? Because I kind of made them up.
I think you're right. I think for the time being, they sound good and then we'll probably have to wind up shoehorning them into different ways to, once we get into the ordinances in more detail. Uh, let's see, page five, we were at page five. Anything there? Okay.
Do we, do we get to have a look at Tom's drawing?
Yeah, I could. Tom, are you okay with me forwarding that to everyone right now? Or maybe I can even open it and maybe I can share my screen too.
Yeah, if you have it there.
Yeah, if it's correct.
Yeah, I think it looked pretty good. So let me pull it up. All right, now, let's see. Can you guys see that?
Yes. Okay. Let's see here.
So this is based on, so for the UR zone, we use a twenty-five percent, which is based on two thousand square feet on an eight thousand square foot lot. So that's what the diagram is. And in the SR zone, we use ten percent, um, which is based on a two thousand square foot house on a twenty thousand square foot lot.
So if I put on their two thousand square foot house, would that make it clearer?
I'm not sure we need that much detail. And I mean, I don't know. You know, maybe we don't even need the measurements because then people might think, oh, I can only build a forty by fifty house. I, you know, I don't know, but um, I thought maybe the measurements might be helpful.
Uh, no, I think that, I think that captures it there. Um, probably don't need to add any additional numbers onto it.
Sounds great.
No, and I, nice work, Tom. I love that it's specific to, you know, our, to us with the UR and SR. I think that's a, a great enhancement to it.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's great.
Great, thanks.
All right, so I will add this figure into the definitions.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. I think I understand it this time. Okay. Let's see, that was on page which page was that on? That was on page, um, five. Yes, five. Anything else on page five? Page six. Page seven. I had, once again, questions on OWTS. And, and, and I don't know that I necessarily want to get into it because I think these are definitions that we talked about already this evening. Um, but I'll, I'll just make one comment, and that is the definition of an OWTS modification. Um, it says it's partial or total replacement of and or changes or additions to a septic system that is functioning properly. Um, the way I understand that we have our OWTS ordinance set up is that if the system is functioning properly, uh, in a court, if, if it's performing properly, we, we don't have to modify it. So I guess in my mind, there's a conflict between a modification and the fact that it's functioning properly would suggest that if it's functioning properly, why, why modify it? So I, 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 and I don't want to necessarily try to wordsmith it. I'm just saying that to me, it's a little incongruous because the whole OWTS ordinance is performance driven. And consequently, you could have a system theoretically that is not up to date, but is still functioning properly. And you would still get a permit, so there would be no need to modify it. That, 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 that's in my mind, what, what's going on. But, um, like I said, I don't necessarily want to wordsmith it, but, uh, I just have some questions on that and we can go through that sometime. Aaron.
Just a, Trevor, with that modification, would that be somebody that for whatever reason has a concrete tank and there's a grant say that they can get a polytank? Is, is, would that be something that would be a modification? It's working just fine. You're just, I don't know that that would even be. I mean, I think these will all flush themselves out eventually, pun intended.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point, Richard, and, and maybe that's, um, you know, and, and maybe that's the, the difference between a modification and, and an upgrade, for example. Maybe they basically have the same definition, but a modification is for a system that's not up to code or not functioning properly. And an upgrade or improvement is this definition, but for a system that is functioning properly. So that might be the distinction between two terms. I think in terms of the ordinance now, not sure there's a flick. Yeah, but that'd be something to reconsider. Because you're right, a, a pit could be functioning properly, but we still require you know, we, and, and we don't require someone to upgrade a pit as long as it's functioning, except when the property sells or if they're improving the property. So there are triggers, um, even, even if it's functioning properly. Um, but yeah, no, I, I think that's a good point. And that might be a good way to, to think about it is you know, a system that's not functioning properly or not to code versus a, a system that is, is functioning. So um, yes, like you said, I, I think it's gonna I don't think we can wordsmith it tonight, but I think that's a good, good consideration to think about.
Fair enough. Anything else on page seven? Page eight. Page nine. And page ten, last but not least.
Could, uh, I mean, this might need to go back to seven, or maybe you don't want to even put it on there, but could I just throw out a possible, uh, op, an idea? Do we want to have a definition for neighborly? Like respectful, responsible treatment of others? Or just like, it's how we act in Trinidad? I don't care if it could just be something almost stupid, but basically we're neighbors in Trinidad. And we want to be respectful. I don't know. Just a thought.
I think it's a good thought. Um, you know, I think that that's not something that we're going to include in regulations, but you know, certainly that kind of wording is, is probably in the city's vision statement, for example.
Okay, wherever you want to put it. Thanks.
I had a comment on page ten, um, under the new section vegetation removal. The, the last sentence, general landscaping maintenance shall include, and it goes on and describes all of those things. Um, I, I wasn't clear to me that that was, was that intended to be part of the definition? Of vegetation removal?
Yeah, because, because up above in the first sentence, it says in excess of general landscaping requirements. Maybe that's in excess of general landscaping maintenance.
And then maybe put general landscaping in parentheses at the end to really kind of set it apart. Because is it kind of a definition within a definition?
It is a definition within a definition, yes.
Yeah, that's what was, yeah, okay. That would work for me. Anything else on page ten? Okay, any?
Yeah, I, I need to go back to ten. Okay. So there's too much in the vegetation removal.
What do you mean?
Well, it talks about vegetation removal, and then it talks about general landscaping, I guess. After you do the removal, then the landscaping shall include. You know, then it talks about that. So I, I guess, I guess that's okay.
Well, as we just said, uh, what we were going to do is make that as a separate definition.
Okay, okay, I guess I missed that. And I'm going to take out the word shall, um, as well, because it's not like we're dictating that people have to do this to, to maintain. So where's the shall? General landscaping maintenance shall include. So I'm just going to say includes. Includes minor seasonal, okay. Yeah, all right.
Tristan? You got your hand up?
Sorry, I've been muted. Um, excuse me. Uh, major vegetation removal, letter E. You've got slopes over fifteen percent. Should that read twenty-five percent? For the opposite of minor, I guess.
Yes, I think, yes, I think that we need to flag this definition, um, because we need to um, make it consistent with whatever we have in the exemptions. I just wasn't sure. Like, I, I don't know if we should include any of the caveats, um, because they're going to be included in the exceptions. Um, for example, um, so I did not, so, so this is the definition that's in the existing glossary. So I decided to leave it for now, but I okay. I think we do need to flag it to follow up on, to make sure it's consistent and decide. Like I said, I, I think I would take out all the caveats probably and, and just leave the caveats in the exception, in, in the exceptions, exclusions, sorry.
Okay, okay.
So I, I don't think you should, and I think you should add an F and add, um, height for vegetation. What is, you've got slopes of fifteen percent and it's all woody. They're not all woody. There are brushes, there are bushes, hedges. And this, you know, I've been beating this thing up for a couple of years and it's, we can't take it out. It's just, you know, if you've got the maintenance, general landscaping maintenance. So if you're going to do dimensions for structures or slopes, this is the time we can put it in for fences, I mean, for bushes, for hedges, trees. Think about it. I guess I'm not totally following. Well, you want to remove, you want to remove the woody part of it? No, I mean, I'm saying if you're putting woody.
No, I mean, I'm saying if you're putting woody vegetation in, and you're talking about vegetation maintenance on slopes, then you also need to talk about shrubs, hedges. I don't know, butterfly trees, I mean.
Well, this is, this is removal, so not, which means complete removal, so not maintenance.
Okay, but they're only removing trees and woody vegetation. They're not removing bushes that are 10 feet high.
Well, that would be considered probably woody vegetation.
That's your, yeah. It has to be defined better.
Well, won't that kind of come as we revisit the vegetation ordinance?
I think, yeah.
Right?
And yeah, so I think this will need more discussion. Maybe I'll try and amend it based on what we have, because it seems to be causing some confusion having it, leaving it the old, the old way.
I just had one other request or suggestion under the general landscaping, just the standard, including but not limited to. I'd like to see that popped in there.
Yeah.
Well, thanks.
Okay, any other comments, considerations on the definitions? And I have been remiss tonight of not asking for public comment. I should have done that for each agenda item, and I just got carried away. But let's see, I'm looking, I don't see any public here, so I will get away with it tonight. I apologize, though, I should not. Okay, so that is the last of our agenda items for discussion, decision, and action. Next item on the agenda are commissioner reports. Anything to report from the commissioners? Okay, next item is staff report.
Um, let's see. Did I, did I, I think I told you at the last meeting, I found out we have till next year to work on the SB2 tasks. I thought, I thought we had to finish that in June. So that's good. We did, we had our first kickoff meeting for the OPC Coastal Resiliency Planning Grant, so that, gosh, it seems like it took two years to get that contract in place with the OPC. I don't know what the delay was, so that's been holding up kind of the sea level rise hazards planning and the safety element of the general plan update. So that's going to be a lot of public outreach, so keep your eye out for some public announcements about that, because we're going to be doing a lot of outreach. I'm also working on the scope of work with Coastal Commission staff on the LCP update grant. I've been working on the circulation element, and I'd like to bring that back to you in June. We might also have an application on the agenda. We'll see if they have everything they need together for an addition. So that'll be our first application in a few months. I think that's all I have. Oh, and the cap. So the, there was a conflict with the county representative on the climate action plan at the last council meeting. So the council is going to have a second meeting in May, so next Tuesday, and the county will present the regional climate action plan at that meeting. It's not for, it's not for adoption or any kind of decision. This is just a public review draft, so getting any input and comments before the document goes into the environmental review process.
Yeah, I was going to mention that also, because I wasn't sure when the council was going to get their presentation. Good to know. Yeah, and incidentally, the public comment period ends at the end of the month, I think.
That's when they said it ended, but I think, I think they'll probably continue to take public comment. I think the Board of Supervisors isn't going to hear it until June. So they're, they will continue to take public comment.
Yeah.
And then the environmental.
Apologies, all, sorry, I have to run.
Okay. The environmental review process will also include public comment.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you. Future agenda items. Anything you want to discuss here, Trevor?
The, I heard that the city, the city was going to go, we're looking for new budget or for new items for next year's, you know, goals. And how do we, how do we convey to them that a website, an interactive website, with trails and permit information, and just like, just to make something to make Trinidad proud? Could, and tie in with the rest of the community also, you know, maybe.
I think, I think that's a great idea for the budget. So yeah, so this would be the time that the council is considering the budget for the next fiscal year. I would say either attend a council meeting or write them a letter. I think that that is, and, and, I mean, if the planning commission wants to send it as a body, I don't have it on the agenda this time, but you know, you could make a stronger recommendation as a body, but I, you know, they, they might be adopting the the, the budget in June. I don't know what the schedule on that is, I can look into it. But I guess I'll also mention, so so in addition, we've got the SB2, and we have the LEAP grant, housing grants. There's also, and LEAP is local early action planning for housing. And then there's also REAP money, which is regional early action planning that HCOG got. So Humboldt County Association of Governments, and they're doling that money out to cities. And one of the things I'm going to propose for Trinidad out of that money is to revamp the city's application forms, form or forms, and then also to create a frequently asked questions document for permitting. So that's not really a website revamp, but we can at least put a FAQ on the website for permitting. And then the OPC grant also includes, with the public outreach, they would like to do some interactive website stuff. So GHD will be looking at that, and you know, probably won't update the entire website, but we are at least in pieces trying to get that updated. But I, the website's awful, it's clunky, it's not user-friendly, it's not easy to add stuff, it's not interactive. So you know, I'm all for that.
Sounds great. I'll send an email or whatever. Also, I was wondering if, since September is septic month, would there be any way to see what's going to happen, say, on August or something at our meeting, to see how you're, you're, you know, telling the public about how the septic is, how to improve your septic?
Sure, so would you like that as an agenda item, or just a staff report? Or you want to see the materials, or what were you, what did you have in mind?
Well, it might give us all something to think about, and how we can, you know, everybody can help. It's a good time to get some word out to people, you know?
Okay. So maybe kind of an informational item? Heads up, okay.
It's a great idea, thanks.
With the numbers, Trevor, on the OWTS, maybe they'll be done.
Some numbers?
Yeah. You know, who has septic, who doesn't, and you know, just a general.
Okay.
Okay. Anything last minute before we adjourn? Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone. I think we have two documents that very soon we'll be able to ship off and get comments back from the Coastal Commission. So thank you very much, really appreciate it. Good work. And with that, we are returned.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Night.
Good night.